All right, good morning, everyone. It's eight thirty. Let's call over to our Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, August 4th.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Weymeyer.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
And if you'd stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance. All right, today's that indication will be led by Pastor Tiger Pennington of the First Baptist Church in Ottawa. Good morning.
Morning.
Let us pray. Eternal and loving God, we give you thanks this day for this gathering, and we give you thanks for every resident of Franklin County in Ottawa. We give you thanks for those gathered today to lead. And oh, God of wisdom, give decision-making grace to this esteemed body. God of mercy, give a tender heart to be concerned for all the citizens of Franklin County. Oh, God of wisdom, grant everything that is needed to make the hard decisions when things are difficult and unclear. May you divinely guide the minds and the thoughts and the decisions. In this day, we just come before you with thanks, that there are people who gather because they care. They care about the peoples of Franklin County. They care about the businesses, the homes, the homeowners, the renters. They care about the most vulnerable. And we pray that all of those would be in their minds and in their hearts as they gather this day and each time they gather through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you. All right. See nothing listed underneath correspondence. We'll move to public comment. Citizen desiring to speak on an agenda, an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county business, and public comment is not permitted in regards to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become an agenda item at a later date.
Shay.
Good morning. Shay Hannysek, I'm here representing the solid waste, Lake Region Solid Waste Authority, and I understand maybe the cat was let out of the bag earlier. But this is the official declaration to be able to say good news to Franklin County. Back in May, we submitted to KDHE for their solid waste grant, and it was officially awarded last week. We got the contract last night, so it will be signed, and we will be revamping and reestablishing our Adopt a Bike program. So that will be going out to six counties. But the best part is it would be able to fund, it's a seventy-five-hundred-dollar grant that we were provided, to be able to fund the new cargo storage container that'll be located here in Franklin County, because this is our hub for the program. So it'll provide better storage for the bikes, for some of the supplies that go with that, so that we have a better opportunity to be able to provide the bikes outwards. And we will also be revising our pamphlet that we put out there that includes the application, so the public will then have more access to applications with the idea that we would increase more applications and be able to provide more, or I guess, receive more donations in order to provide many, many more bikes throughout the county. So that is our good news that we are sharing today. So thank you.
Might make a note, since we took those signs out and put it in all the ICANs in the five different counties and then the Conservation District, I got a call yesterday from Burlington and want to know what she's gonna do with all these applications. I said, you gotta get them to me and give her, you know, the all. And I said, how many you got? She says, I got a lot. So hopefully, you know, it did. And that's been kind of slow down on that part, so hopefully that has stirred it up. So, and it takes, on their end, too. They have to promote it once it gets to them. So evidently, they've done a good job down there, so everything, I hope it all turns out good.
All right. Thanks for making the trip. Consent agenda today would include minutes from our meeting on July twenty-eighth, claim vouchers in the amount of four hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars, ninety-eight cents, payroll in the amount of one million, two hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-three cents, and tax change orders in the amount of eleven hundred sixty dollars, twenty cents. Are you motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Stottlemeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Um, yes, except for all staying from the minutes from when.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Items of business, first which is to receive an update from David Reeves on the Power of the Past Tractor Show. Come on up, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. As you guys know, I've been around here a long time, but I'm David Reeves, the president of the Power of the Past Tractor Club, and we're getting ready to have our twenty-sixth show this year. We'll be featuring Minneapolis tractors and auto engines. We had, so far, we've had a lot of inquiries. I think we'll have another good show this year. Last year, you know, we didn't get to have it. We had a national tractor show scheduled for last year, the Massey Expo in North America. But we worked and we got it back for twenty-twenty-four.
Oh, good.
So if everything works good, you know, we'll have it back then. And that should be a heck of a show, because the Massey organization has never had a national show this far south or this far west in, in the country. Most of them are in the northeast and north. And so, but I give you all these handouts. This is part of what we use that Franklin County Convention Visitor Bureau money for. And our insurance company has also went, and they said if we'd put them on there as a co-sponsor, they'd pay for half of these. And these are a lot nicer handouts than what we'd been having. We had discolored paper ones, and so Integrity Insurance out of Topeka has done that with us. And, you know, we're, we're real excited about this year after we didn't get to have it last year. We're working with, well, the sixteenth of August, got a meeting with Alan Radcliffe and, and all of them on the emergency plan for the show. We do that every year. And we've talked with Nick Robbins. They've always had an ambulance crew down there for us, keep them on grounds. And he also asked if we'd let him have the trailer down there to give out COVID shots, flu shots, and all that. And we're, I mean, we're glad that he's doing that. And we've got, you know, a lot of activity planned. And I tell you, the, the area businesses have been so great. We have a little donation drive we go around and ask for donations, and, because we have a little auction at the, at the show. And the, the community is great supporters. So, and we bring a lot of people to town. Normally, we'll have thirty-five-hundred to four thousand people. And, you know, we never know how much will be there, but we'll run at least three hundred tractors and a couple of hundred old, old motors. And so, you know, like I said, we do have a lot of support. And what I'm here to ask you guys and all is if you would allow free dumping this year. We usually have a couple of big dumpsters that we have put there. We put all of our trash in it, and then they haul it to the landfill. And so, we're just trying to see if we could get that donated from the county. So it's all I've got. If you guys got anything, I can talk about tractors to you all day. But I appreciate it.
Well, we were talking before the meeting, it's a great show you always put on. I think of it as a fall event, though, but it's just a month away.
Yeah, yeah, it's just September ten, eleven, and twelve. And, you know, on Friday night, for the price of the admission, you get a free ham and bean supper. And this year, we're cooking two hundred and fifty pounds of beans. We got a hundred and twenty-five pounds of ham. And, you know, we'll have, we'll have plenty of beans for.
A lot of grub.
But thank you, guys.
Thank you. Well, I'm sure we'd be happy to continue waiving the dump fees for the waste generated by the twenty-twenty-one Power of the Past Tractor Show. Would anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Second it. Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer.
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Second item of business is rezoning application. Kenneth Cook, our planning and building directors here. Good morning.
This request is for a rezoning of a property that's located at the north side of Douglas Road, on the east side of Louisiana Road. The property currently is a forty-six acre parcel, and the current owners would like to sell fifteen acres of the property to Mr. and Mrs. Sparks. The, because the property, the remainder will actually end up being less than forty acres, it ends up being that the property's gonna be rezoned into two different zoning districts. So the fifteen acre parcel's gonna be rezoned into the RE district, and then the remainder, which will be about thirty-one acres, will be rezoned to the A-two district. The planning commission at its July meeting did make a recommendation of approval of the rezoning application based off of the, the normal findings that they consider based off the golden criteria. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Pretty straightforward.
They're actually raking off the part that has the house already established on it.
I think the, the house is on the western part, so there's a little bit of a field on the eastern side that, that's being sold off. So they're, it's more of a separate field. The, I think the existing house is just sort of right around where the pond is.
Well, would anyone care to make a motion to approve rezoning application twenty-one oh six dash eighteen eighty-nine and edit the official zoning map accordingly?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Thank you. On the staff reports, Derek.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I got a, we got a request from a scout troop, a boy scout troop, that has forty units in Douglas, Franklin, and Anderson County. Try to meet about every other month in Ottawa, because it's kind of a centralized location. They are wondering if they could utilize the commission chambers to have those meetings. I mean, we're pretty generous in allowing folks to use it, but this is a new request that we haven't entertained, so I thought it appropriate to run it through the five of you. I certainly don't have any issue with this. It would be, they want it Thursday, September second, from five-thirty to eight-thirty, which doesn't pose a huge problem for us. Just wanted to make sure none of the five of you had any issue with that.
Sounds great.
Okay. I've talked about it off and on for months now, but we're aiming for next week on the countywide software project to have the RFP in front of you. Dustin and I are gonna be putting the finishing touches on those over the next few days. We will have a study session, so we'll issue that RFP. We'll, obviously, we'll solicit bids and proposals, and, and we're still, as a group, deciding when the appropriate time to just come in here and, and just discuss how this is gonna potentially revolutionize the way the county does business. I mean, as the five of you are aware, our, our technology in that regard is pretty far behind. And so, just a full gamut of software services, new finance software, new payroll software, new taxation software, asset management software. I mean, it, it really has the potential to, to take us to the next level. And so, we'll have that study session in the next couple of months. But hopefully, we'll have that in front of you next week. And then, we've got Chief Robbins here to give a COVID update. But we're ramping our COVID response back up. We have a meeting tomorrow with the four superintendents here locally just to talk about the plan for schools, because this, you know, has happened at an unfortunate time and that our numbers are really peaking again right as school is about to start. So we'll be doing that tomorrow, and that's all I have.
Casey, anything? Sheriff.
Good morning. We participated last night in National Night Out with the city of Ottawa and down at Forest Park. It was a good event, and Nick's had his people there, EMS and Health Department were both there. I'm sure he'll be giving an update on that, but I know that the seats were filled over the, over the COVID stuff for quite a while, so that was good to see. But it was a good event, a lot of people out there, and had a good time with the public interaction. And then that will, type of event will continue this weekend, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday is a lane fair. And we'll be down there participating in that, and that's always a fun event, a very large event for such a small town. But it's, it is a very good fair, and I'd encourage any of you to, to stop in down there and experience part of that. It's, it's a good time down there. But we're still going through, taking, just taking care of business day to day, and our staffing level is back up full. But then tomorrow night, we have one that it'll be his last shift. We have someone that is leaving to go with Highway, to Highway Patrol or Capitol Police, and we have that, our process on that. We've already stopped taking applications, and we're getting ready to do testing and start that process. So I don't, I don't anticipate that that vacancy will be there very long. It'll be, it'll be filled short, short order. So that's where we stand right now on staffing and our jail counts. Inmates are back up into the seventies again and doing some, still doing our COVID mitigation stuff. So it gets, gets to where we do have to farm out still, more than we would like to, but it, it's, I believe, proper at this time with everything that we got going on. So other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Go ahead, Nick.
Morning.
Morning.
Just quick update, right now, we are at ninety-nine active cases, so we're continuing to see an increase in the COVID virus. We have five deaths since July, and we've got four in the hospital at this time. We are continuing our testing efforts and seeing quite a few people come in to get tested, symptomatic individuals, non-symptomatic individuals. Really, the target that we're at right now is vaccines, pushing out vaccines, getting them in people, so hopefully, we can slow this increase down. We had to dunk at Dr. Fair, which I talked about, which brought in seventeen. Last night, we participated in National Night Out as well. We gave twenty-three Pfizer vaccines last night, so our new push is gonna be going to people. We're planning to go to the Lane Fair on Friday night. We'll be doing vaccines at the fire department, starting at five-thirty. What we see with these vaccine clinics is a big push right off the bat, and then just a few people trickle in. So we're gonna plan it for an hour, and if we have a good turnout, we'll continue to give them until we don't have anybody else that wants it. We have partnered with OU, so at the OU Fusion that will be down at Legacy Square, we'll be, they'll have a dunk tank down there. Dr. Reg will be on it, so the students that get vaccinated can dunk him. So we're hoping that we see another large turnout there. We are also looking on the twelve to go to Princeton and set up down in that area and see if we can get a turnout down there in the afternoon. We'll do it from four-thirty to seven. Other big clinics, Dave Reese mentioned, we're gonna be at the tractor show. We're also gonna be at the cars show the following week. So we're hoping that if we get out and about, we'll get some people to stop in, at least ask questions, and let us answer them, so.
Ninety-nine active, how many did you test?
What's that?
How many have you tested? How many did you test?
I didn't look at that number. I know we're seeing a lot of tests coming in. I, I know our positivity rates are up thirteen point some percent right now, so we're, we're continuing to see that right there below fifteen percent, which is the number we really wanna stay under.
Granted, we didn't test them all, but we got ninety-nine positives and a thirteen percent positive rate. You've tested a lot of people.
We have, and.
What I wanted to get at is, I think, you guys, you and Derek both deserve credit. You know, we had those two slow months, and there was talk about, well, should we pull the trailer? Should we let go of some of our COVID health, help? You guys kept them busy. They weren't sitting around doing other health functions there for a month or two. But now, it'd be very difficult to try and find that help again. We got the hospital offering, what, ten thousand dollar bonus for nurses, anything? I mean, healthcare people are just impossible to find, and we could have been in a real pinch, but now there's a need, and we have the people who are ready to respond. So I think that was good foresight just to see down the road a little bit. Good job to both of you.
Are you seeing your numbers young, younger people?
Honestly, it's, it's been a range of older to younger, kind of what we were seeing before. We really haven't gotten a target area of, of the age groups, it's getting everybody.
I just had something come through on my phone this morning that said that twenty to thirty-year-olds, when they get it, they get it faster and harder than the, before, you know, this variant. So anyway, something we need all to consider.
This variant is, is worse than the first, within the first round, we're seeing a lot more sick patients. And I talked about it on the radio, one of the things that Dr. Ransome and I have had a lot of conversations about, the COVID group has, is the non-vaccinated people and the COVID, the people that have COVID that are hospitalized are taking the ICU beds for the people that need for heart attacks, strokes, that kind of stuff. You know, when we're shipping patients from ransom to Wichita to find ICU beds, and Wichita's shipping them to Denver, we are seeing things that we haven't seen before, and that's, if anything, a bigger push to get the vaccine, because we're, we're plugging up the hospitals with COVID when we need it for other people, too. So the crisis is real, and then you have the staffing crisis on top of it that is making it even worse.
Nick, is your ambulance service transferring people down to Wichita?
We can't transfer them to Wichita. We had to fly the last one to Wichita, because with the call volume we have, we.
Can't be five hours without an ambulance.
We can't. And that's one of the things that we're seeing with, with Advent. And when we talk about it, we're seeing the transfers going up, which is putting us in more situations with the ambulances out of the county here, because we have to go farther. Patient used to go to Lathor, even Shawnee Mission are going to St. Luke's, KU. Even, we had one go to St. Luke's Northland the other day, because that was the only ICU bed available, research. So patients from here are going farther out, taking our ambulances out longer.
Nick, there's a lot of false information out there on social media. Do you, do you have a handout or something like that of all the false information? Why people don't wanna get the shot?
We targeted that at the beginning. I know Casey and Brenda are working with, are working to put out some, a flyer and some information on social media with this push for vaccines of the benefits of getting it. We're planning on trying to hand that out at some of the schools, get it to the schools' hands to hand out. So we are working on getting something out to them.
And over the last eighteen months, we've put out information in so many different ways just to try and combat that ignorance. And, and I don't know to what success we've had, but we've, we've provided facts from the CDC. We've provided facts from independent research institutions. We've put together common COVID myths. I mean, I, we, we've spent a lot of time brainstorming how we can, can get that info out there. And certainly, we're open to any other ideas on how to combat that.
I, I know we all got an email this last week about mask wearing, you know, about how mask wearing is not something, doesn't really work. And, and whatever you believe, you can find people that, you can find, on, on the internet, you can find information that will support what you believe. And I would rather trust my doctors and, you know, health officials in this, in this county than something I find on the internet, so.
And that's true. One of the encouraging things that I've seen is I know people that are, at the beginning, were completely anti against this vaccine. They're starting to ask more questions. So I'm hopeful that we're seeing a turn, and there's a lot that, the study was out there that said, pretty much everybody in the United States knows somebody that's died of COVID. And, you know, I think that's starting to hit people more, and hopefully, we'll see the change in that, so.
Do you think it'll help when they actually, see, right now, we just have a, what do they call it, temporary or whatever, the, the vaccine? When they actually give them the full, which maybe will be soon, hopefully? You know, when they say, no, that it's not just emergency use, it's.
Full FDA approval, is that what you're?
And that's what a lot of people have said. As soon as it goes that way, I'm interested, so hopefully, that does happen. But just before I forget some stuff, we, we started our nursing home ramp-up calls again, too. We started those yesterday, and I kinda wanna give you guys an update on what's going on there. One of the encouraging things from that call was the majority of the residents of the nursing homes are, are vaccinated. Well over ninety percent in each one of the nursing homes are vaccinated, so that's, that's encouraging. The discouraging part is the staff in the nursing homes, they have a low percentage of vaccines. The other thing that has happened is it's almost impossible to do another shutdown of a nursing home. So with the first shutdown of nursing homes, the mental health of the patients and that, they, K-dads has kind of stepped up and said if the, if it affects the person negatively, so they start having depression, decreases in health, they need to have visitors. So all the nursing homes have had to take a different look at how they're gonna do visitations and screenings at the doors. They're gonna require the usages of their mask, not somebody else's mask. Visitations in the room with door closed, if they're double-room resident, or double-resident rooms, they'll have a common space. So they are taking good practice, or good approaches to, the new mandates are out there, but it's gonna be hard for any of them to shut down at this time. So that's the other thing. And when we asked them what their, what their difficulties were yesterday, they said staffing and, staffing and getting people to get the vaccine. So that's why we're gonna hit it hard with vaccine. We're gonna try to go to people, and we are carrying Pfizer now. We do have Moderna, we're gonna try to get pushed out. Walmart has picked up and now has Pfizer and Moderna as well, so anybody that wants it can go to Walmart. And our big approach, I think, is gonna be to reach out to the surrounding communities. Ottawa has a lot of opportunity for vaccine, but we're gonna hit them on some of these outliers and see what we can do. Is there any questions?
We'll get to the point where people, so they're, they're saying like, some people, if, if they're a company they work for, or if the bar that they go to requires it, then maybe they'll finally get it. Yeah, I don't know, whatever it takes.
Truman Medical Center just said that they're gonna have all, they're gonna require all their people get vaccinated, and it's kind of one of those tricky situations. You have a staffing issue here, and you have a mandate here, so it's gonna get interesting.
And Nick, has anybody asked for a booster?
There, we're getting a lot of questions on the booster. Right now, there's nothing that's coming out from CDC or anyone about boosters. Dr. Ransome and I believe that there will be a booster coming out probably in the next few months. They'll be looking at this variant, what that's gonna look like, but at this point, we don't have boosters.
Pfizer is doing clinical trials on a booster shot, and they've ramped those up. And I would anticipate probably yet in twenty-one. I mean, I think Pfizer is already making the recommendation that boosters should be offered, but the CDC hasn't publicly agreed with that yet. But I would anticipate that it's, I bet, within the next six months, we have that.
But whether a booster does be another shot.
Yeah. That's exactly what it would be, yeah. But it's just such a new disease that we, we just don't have research on it yet. We don't have data, so we are actively learning on the fly, like what the efficacy rate is, and, and that's why, I mean, we just, we're still gathering data. But I would anticipate it is coming.
And just a statement on, on breakthrough cases, one of the other things. One of the other things we continue to hear about are breakthrough cases. You know, any vaccine, you're going to have a breakthrough case. That's the nature of it. You try to vaccinate a bunch of people and hope that if somebody does get it, that their immunity is better and they don't get sick. We are seeing that the ones that are having breakthrough cases have very light cold symptoms. They're not getting as sick. And if they do get, if they are one of those people, have a breakthrough and get sick, or they have a lot of underlying health conditions that are not going good for them anyway. So just if people are asking or pushing that there's a lot of breakthrough cases, there really aren't a lot of breakthrough cases. We're still less than one percent of breakthrough cases in our county. And the ones we've seen are all getting through it well without getting real sick. The ones that aren't vaccinated are getting sick. So that is some stuff.
That's kind of disclosed upfront when they talk about the effective rate of the vaccine, that it's ninety percent effective, that it's not going to catch every single.
Are you finding people that only get the one shot, didn't go back for their second, getting it? Or do you know?
We haven't seen a lot of people calling wanting a second shot. But the other thing, there's so many places right now for people to get the vaccine, which has been nice. The bad thing about it, and I think I've talked about it, is Walmart, Walgreens, Kramer's, Auburn Pharmacy up in Wellsville, they don't report to us. So the only way we find out about these is through what they report to the state, and then we get back. So it's kind of a system that makes it tough to find out who's getting the seconds and what's going on because of that.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Kenneth, did you have anything? No, I need you, okay. Paul? All right. David Lee.
All right, Commissioner, since last week, our crews have, we've worked on a couple of different road projects. One up on Ellis Terrace, west of Eisenhower, and another on Pawnee, east of K-33. Both of those, we raised the road and put a crossroad tube in. We've got a little bit of finished work, but for the most part, those two projects are done. We also have worked on a couple of specific ditching jobs, one on Osborne Road, east of Idaho, and another on Rock Creek, east of Iowa. I think we've got maybe another day on Rock Creek, possibly. But those are coming along just fine. We've also fixed the washout and installed two entrances. So our guys have been busy. We've also had a couple of patch crews out that kind of divide up the county and run around and hit as many of those potholes as possible. And we'll continue to do that as weather permits and time permits and those sorts of things. We did have a kickoff meeting with Circle C paving this morning, early on the chip seal project. They're going to be mobilizing on Friday and plan to get started laying the chips and the seal on Monday. And they'll start, the plan is right now to start at Rock Creek at Highway 59 and work their way east to Rantoul. They're estimating approximately ten days to get that work done. Just working Monday through Friday. They'll start seven, seven-thirty in the morning and wrap up around six in the evening or so. We will have, one of our staff members will be along with them pretty much the whole time to answer any questions and make sure that things are going along smoothly. So that's good. Also, this afternoon, Pat Campbell and I are meeting with SES to really begin prepping for the upcoming meeting with KDHE. There's a few questions that we need to sort out. But you all approving the maximum footprint of that really set the stage for everything that comes now. So we're actively working that project. And the last thing, I visited with Paul yesterday, I think it was yesterday. Things, a lot of things happening right now. But hopefully, next week, I've also visited with the city about their demolition program. I hope to have the short memo and a resolution to Derek in the next couple of days. Hopefully, if that goes smoothly, it'll be on your agenda for next week to consider. So like I said, lots of things happening right now. We're all just trying to keep all the balls in the air.
All right.
I have one question, David. Along Santa Cruz Road, east of 59 Highway. There's orange lines across the road, on that road there by the quarry and by Midland River Road. And I was curious what that means.
I'm not sure. I'll need to check into that. I know our guys, when we were doing blade patching, were kind of marking some areas, but I don't recall them specifically discussing this area that you mentioned, but I'll certainly look into it.
I was curious.
All right. Thank you, David. Anything from the clerk's office? All right, Commissioners, Don?
I think the best thing I have, I went to Rantoul meeting Monday night, and the main subject down there was everybody did a course. They're having their tower, water tower cleaned, and they're talking about getting in a rotation and putting in new fire hydrants in town. And one of the subjects was, I mentioned to you the other day that what Paul had been working with all the towns on the grants and so forth, and I had to put a little burn on there, too. And they applied on the last day, and they want to do it on the 25th. And they received a check for half the money on the 28th. So I thought that was a pretty good deal, you know? I think it kind of shocked them. In fact, the treasurer at the meeting says, we got money in our account. I don't know where it come from. And they called me the next morning and told me that's what it was. It actually was a deposit from a state account three days after this. And they got half of their money. And I think they got half of the last night.
And so will they use that to subsidize their water projects, then? Oh, good.
Great. Thank you. All right, Ian?
I think I, David, I did listen to the City of Ottawa in the last couple of study sessions. They are still finalizing their budget. And then I have a question for you, Janet. So if they don't raise their taxes, but they get more money from sales tax, do they still have to go through that process? If the extra money is coming from the sales tax and not?
No, because the revenue neutral rate is specific to the levied tax rate, the ad valorem tax rate.
So they're still trying to consider whether they want to not do, you know, to keep their revenue neutral rate. So anyway, I think that'll be discussed today at their meeting. They condemned several properties, or at least they moved forward with that will be coming on, I think, again today. And then they also have, they have a date to sell the Cove's properties. They're, they do have minimum bids, and they are going to, they are going to charge that, those specials for the last three years. So it'll be very interesting to see how many bidders that they get and if they will go for the prices that they want with the. It seems like they have a little bit of a conflict on the commission as far as people that are really wanting to see growth and others that are kind of holding back a little bit. So it'll be interesting to see how it moves forward, the elections this year with the commissioners. We might have a brand-new set of commissioners on the City of Ottawa, so.
If I could just add one thing about the City of Ottawa has already scheduled a hearing date that's consistent with holding a revenue-neutral rate hearing. They have already given me notice that they plan to hold a revenue-neutral rate hearing. That does not mean that they have to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. And I did talk to their clerk yesterday about that. So they will hold their revenue-neutral rate hearing, but they could ultimately decide as a commission to lower that down and stay under the revenue-neutral rate. But they have taken all the steps in case. I compare this to what we brought to you guys. We brought a proposed budget with a decrease of about three mils to you guys, but asked you guys to publish a little bit higher than what we were showing you just because the City of Ottawa's concern is very much the same concern as ours. From the time that we have to have the budget ready to announce what our projected tax rate is, it's another two months until we're actually going to have to publish and hold a hearing. And there is so much that can happen. And we would get another, I mean, we get sales tax every month. So you would have several more months of projections on sales tax, how that's coming in and what that looks like. So there are so many moving parts, especially for Ottawa getting so much more sales tax than the county, because we only get 1.5% sales tax, and half of that goes to the hospital directly. We don't get that in our budget at all. It goes straight to the hospital. But the City of Ottawa has community improvement districts down on, like, Price Chopper and Home Base and Holiday Inn Express that lifts the sales tax higher. So they do have a lot of sales tax that they have to account for.
And then utilities income, too. They have some different streams of revenue we don't.
Absolutely.
And just to clarify, you said they're going to hold a revenue-neutral hearing, which means they are basically reserving the right to not be revenue-neutral.
Right.
It's kind of confusing if you don't know the.
As I understand it, it looks like that even if they don't, if they are not revenue-neutral, that they're, that it will go down, what they're looking. So, you know, we go down, they go down. It looks good for the taxpayers, even if we're not revenue-neutral.
And I just want to reiterate that we did put all of the budget hearing dates out on our website. So there's a lot of them this week happening, and they're out on the county clerk's page, and they're separated by township and cemetery, city, school district. So all of those hearing dates are out there. So if people have questions about these budgets, they can definitely go and see what the hearing date is and who the contact person is at that entity. Contact that entity or by all means, contact me. I have a lot of the budgets already, so I can help provide those if need be. So we're trying to get that information out there. Casey also posted it to our Facebook page with a direct link to our website where those hearing dates are posted. And, yeah, many of them won't happen until September because they are holding the revenue-neutral rate hearing, which means that they're reserving the right to go over the revenue-neutral position. But that doesn't mean that they're going to.
And the last thing I have, and it has nothing to do with the county, really, but there is a huge shortage for blood across the nation. And today, at Celebration Hall, from 12 to 6, there is a red cross blood drive. So if you've given in the past, if you haven't, if you thought about it, it's a good day to do it.
Janet, is there some sort of penalty if you're not revenue-neutral? I guess a lot of places are not going to be able to meet that standard. Is there, what's the alternative?
So there's not a penalty, per se, but what happens is that you have a requirement to, you have a requirement to publish. In the future, starting next year, there will be an additional mailing that will go out to everyone's house that is in your district if you are not planning to stay revenue-neutral, so that that taxpayer can see what the projected increase will do to their tax bill. So they will get that directly at their house. After the next two years, if you plan to exceed the revenue-neutral rate, you would have to pay a portion of the mailing to go out. So I will be figuring that based on percentage of tax base to each entity. So, you know, we have four school districts, basically. We have a little bit of others, but four school districts. And all four of those school districts, according to the law right now, will go over every single year. They don't have a choice. They have to collect 20 mils on their general fund. So those four school districts would divide up, you know, the cost of our mailing and pay a portion of that. If we, as the county, go over, we would pay a portion of that. So everybody who is planning to go over the revenue-neutral rate, triggering that mailing would have to participate in paying for that. But that doesn't happen for two more years.
Good deal for the mailman.
And Roy, I would chime in, and I've said this at these meetings before, but the vast majority of municipalities are not going to be revenue-neutral. I mean, revenue-neutral, and feel free to chime in, Janet, but it effectively means that you don't levy taxes on a single additional dollar from the previous year. And David Lee would tell you that the cost of goods and services for public works continues to go up. The sheriff would say the same thing. Dustin Corrington would say the same thing. There is a labor shortage. The cost of people continues to go up. Like, it is literally impossible. Like, we have found so many efficiencies on behalf of the taxpayers, and I'm committed to continue finding those efficiencies. And we talk about them every year, and we lay them out, and we'll continue to do that. But it's just not sustainable. Like, the cost of goods right now, especially public works-related goods, are so high that, I mean, we wouldn't have the ability to buy the things that we need. But we are doing it in a way that is responsible. So even though we're not revenue-neutral, so our revenue's going to come up. We're doing so, so modestly, our mil levy is going to come way down. I mean, we're looking at a three-mil decrease. And as I told you last week, that's five mils in five years. Like, if we pass this budget, the county will be down five mils in five years, and that can't be said enough. So revenue will creep up a little bit, but the tax rate will continue to go down. And if our values continue to hold, I think that's a sustainable pattern. Like, I think we can continue to try and bring that mil down. So it's not a bad spot to be. But to expect my department heads to run departments with literally not a single extra dollar year over year, like, it's just, I would be coming to you asking, okay, which departments do you want to cut? Like, which services do you no longer want to provide? It's just not sustainable.
Luckily, the growth we're seeing in the county of inside-city limits and outside-city limits has helped push that down, too. Not just our values of existing property going up, which in effect raises your tax bill, but that we're able to combat inflation with the increased value from new developments, new construction, new taxpayers.
So that, all it does is trigger a notification to everybody? That's not the end of it, then?
Yep.
We have a study session on Monday. Anyone else need to jump in before the end of the meeting? And we'd look for a motion to adjourn. So move? Is there a second?
Thank you.
Hold favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.